Yeah, from Paris to on board. Yeah, and then bicycle all day.
Bicycle now, just on the bar tonight. I wanted to, I wanted to do that. Basically, New York has always been out.
That'd be fun. That'd like to wine tasting on the bar too. That's, that's, yeah, swine tasting cruise.
It'd be really popular bringing bottles of wine from San Antonio. Well, I've heard about these wines. I'll trade you for a rock bottle.
We need to clean up this time. We have, we have some there money. We said, Mark, right? And who, you mean, who pays? We're holding some money for the Audi, the same for the purple tail Karen. So we need to be cleaning. We said, Mark, right? And who, you mean, who pays? We're holding some money for the Audi, the same for the purple tail Karen. So we need to be cleaning. Well, it's a good time with book deal Karen, since they give them like construction. We never, we never. If, if any place that needs a food, it was, it's the interest. That is, that's after. We actually just spent a lot of time in San Antonio. Anybody? Yeah. It's a paper. One of the good cars and they say, by the way, by the way, give us a minute, invoice by the end of week. Just before you clear it out.
Soon as that comes.
We reach out, yeah.
There he was.
Are you ready tonight?
Yeah. Uh, wait for you, because I know how to read these clocks.
It's exactly six o'clock.
It is, okay, can I go?
Yes.
Okay, welcome to the joint budget study session of Wednesday, May 20th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Botroff.
Here.
Councilmember Vetrin.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Here. First of all, my heart goes out to the community of Santa Barbara for what's happening down there right now. And that in 1969, they had an oil spill there. And it was actually the beginning of the environmental movement of preservation of our coastline. And which started a good thing. The bad thing is, is that the city council of Santa Barbara did not learn their lesson from that. And they are the cause of this going on again. They allowed derricks for income. And the repercussions are shown again on the coast of California. And if anybody knows that section going from Gaviota on down to Santa Barbara, it's one of the most pristine beaches and wildlife areas in the state of California on the coastline. And it, right now, it's devastated. And so, my heart goes out to them. Hopefully they'll, hopefully they'll correct their problems down there. Okay? Is there any additional materials to add to this, Sue?
No.
Okay. It's your time for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that appear to be, comments from staff?
I do, I do want to relay the message from our treasurer who, excuse me, regrets not being able to attend this evening. She has a family member who's graduating, and she's planned, been planning to attend that graduation out of state.
And I have a couple announcements. The Capital Historical Museum Board is looking for, to fill three seats on the board. And the application deadline is May 28th. So you can contact City Hall for more information or look on the city's website. And there will be a blood drive on June 5th at Jade Street Community Center. So if you want more information, contact City Hall or the Red Cross. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
I have an appointment to the Monterey Bay Air Quality Control Board Advisory Committee. So any member of the Capital community, maybe we can put it on the scroll, they can contact me directly. And I can make the appointment and move along.
I think Mark Sullivan did that one time for a while.
He may have, yeah, very good.
Council members, comments?
Monday is Memorial Day, but the museum is open. They're going to try to be open more hours, especially during the summer. And so, they're, they are going to be open Monday. So if you know, if you have company or have folks that are going to be in town, they can come in. There's a lot of really great videos. I was volunteered there the other day, and I didn't realize that they had interviewed Richard Nutter. And who describes his early days of his family. His great grandfather bought property from the Martina Castro family, from the El Rancho. When this was a SoCal Rancho and the Castle Rancho. The Nutter family bought property. And he said that they, they ranch, they had big cherry orchards. It was fun to talk, to listen to him talk about raising local cherries. And he, Carolyn Swift interviewed him and said, now, did you consider that area Capitola? Oh, no, he said, not until you got down to now where Grady's Market is. From there on down was Cap, we considered Capitola. Capitola was the beach, the cottages, the places by the beach, few homes up on People Hill, few homes over on, you know, other areas of town, the jewel box or other areas of town. But that was essentially Capitola, everything else was SoCal. And all the ranches and the farms and everything like that. But anyway, so it's fun to, it's quite old. It's at least, interviews, it's over 10 years old, I'm sure. But anyway, some really good, interesting information in there if you have some time and want to come in and pull out a video and watch it.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay. This evening, we have presentation of proposed 2015-2016 fiscal budget. Jamie, you could take it from there. Would you also explain to us what the process is going to be for budget hearings and how we're going to do this? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. First of all, we're pleased to present the annual budget to the council, draft budget for review. And this is going to be the first of several budget hearings that we'll be holding to consider the budget. This is not really an opportunity to adopt the budget, but I think at this point, the purpose of this hearing primarily is to get council questions or direction on potential modifications to the draft budget that we can research and bring back to you at the next hearing next week. The Finance Advisory Committee reviewed this presentation, yeah, last night. They've scheduled another meeting for, I believe it's next week or the following week. And they will be presenting their recommendation to you at the June, hold me out here, June 2nd? June 2nd council meeting. So.
Are we going to discuss CIP at all tonight? Or is this, we don't have any information, so.
So what we will be talking about tonight are the proposed projects to be allocated in the CIP. And that is included.
We never received any information on.
Right. Those projects are included here in the, in the presentation this evening.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our new finance director, Mark. He's done a great job preparing for this presentation and helping pull the budget, budget together this year. I'm going to be here to help if we have questions. And with that, I think we're ready to dig into it.
Thanks, Jamie. Mayor, members of council, as Jamie mentioned, we'll go over the proposed budget for fiscal year 15-16. We'll start by looking at some of the budget highlights, move on to the general fund overview, so looking at the revenue and expenditures in the general fund. We'll look at the reserves and where we, where the balances currently are, look at the allocation of the Measure O projected revenue, look at the capital improvement plan, we'll do a department overview, and then we'll look at the projected fund balance and some recommendation that staff is currently making to use that fund balance. So this budget, the emphasis is on financial stability, capital improvements and enhancing the services for Capital residents and visitors. The completion of McGregor Park project, it includes a $700,000 allocation for the capital improvement projects from the Measure O money, as well as a $100,000 transfer to the facility reserves fund. The budget includes a reduction in the successor agency administrative allowance. It's down to $50,000. Two years ago, that number was 250,000, went down to 150 last year, and now it is 50,000. 100% of the Measure O revenues are allocated to the Measure O commitments, which is the reserve replenishment, CIP street projects, staffing for street improvements, and the staffing for the village policing efforts. As part of that Measure O, CIP projects, those include the Monterey Avenue paving, 42nd Avenue Diamond Street, Diamond Neighborhood paving, Bay Avenue Roundabout, and the Stockton Avenue Bridge Assessment. Couple more highlights is we're fully pre-funding the other post-employment benefits. This is made up of two components. There's the pay-as-you-go component for current retirees. That totals just under $32,000 next year, as well as a contribution to our trust fund for future payments, and that's $38,600. The budget includes the implementation of employees' COLAs identified in the MOU, as well as the increased Cal, Calp, Calpers rate increases. Moving on to just a high-level summary of the general fund, we're projecting a balanced budget right now. We have a $521 projected surplus at the end of the year. Revenues are increasing from 14.2 million in the adopted budget last year to 14.8. That's mostly in the tax, sales tax, property tax, and TOT collections. Expenditures are increasing from 14.7 to 14.8. One of the, the highlights from the last budget, so we're projecting 14-15 general fund to have an ending fund balance of $934,500. That's comprised of the 13-14 actual fund balance, which was just over a million dollars. And we're projecting a slight deficit in the general fund of $142,000 this year to come up with that $934,000.
I'll remind council that that deficit isn't the result of any structural overspending, if you will. It was a result of the fund transfers that we made as part of last year's budget appropriation process, transferring out some of the fund balances. So the fund balances, in a sense, were what, what were driving that.
When we look at our general fund revenue, the, the largest category, almost 80% of the general fund comes from taxes. That's totaling projection about $11.6 million next year. The, the second biggest category, about 13%, is charges for services. That includes parking fines, parking revenue, and the recreation programs. Some of the projections used for the, for the revenue in the general fund is sales tax increasing by 2.1%, which is a $171,000 increase. Property tax up 3%, just under 210,000. TOT increasing 2%. We have franchise tax going up 2.6%. And then that's successor agency with a pretty large decrease. One of the, one of the big areas of concern when I came on board was looking at the sales tax and the percentage that the budget is driven by the sales tax collection, which is very economic, economically sensitive revenue source. That makes up over 50% of the general fund revenue every year. When you include the TOT, parking revenue and fines, that's almost 70% of the, of the general fund revenue budget. When we look at some of the trends, you can see sales tax has been increasing steadily since fiscal year 10-11. The big increases have been the Measure O and then the measure, and the Measure D, D revenue. And you can see in the future years, the reduction when Measure D expires. And we're projecting that to be about $1.1 million.
Far as can play through the year or something?
That expires in December of 2017. So that's, in the 17-18 projection, it goes down half of the prior year. And then it's fully eliminated in the 18-19 budget. When we take a look at sales tax going back a little bit further, so looking back at 2002-2003 to date, you can see a big decrease in the '07, '08 to the 2009-2010 budget. Sales tax during that time went down 32%, which is $1.8 million.
This is, I think, just a point that's worth noting, and this ties back to the graphic that Mark showed previously about how much of our budget is dependent on sales tax. And, you know, I, this is the sort of graphic that keeps city managers up at night, knowing that historically, the county, the state experiences economic declines every five to eight years. And, you know, the last decline was pretty significant. And we're obviously not very well insulated from economic downturns, given how much of our revenues are associated with economically sensitive revenue streams.
Property tax is actually a fairly stable revenue source. You can see it's steadily increasing about 2% to 3% every year. And then we're projecting that to increase, you know, same percentage in the future years. When we look at the transient occupancy tax, that has been increasing steadily, you know, in the last couple of years. There was a new hotel that opened in 2011, which, which produces quite a bit of money, tax revenue to the city. That's not the whole increase. The other part of the increase is increased rates for visitors. Moving on to the expenditure side, the expenditures are projected to increase just under $59,000. The main changes are in personnel, so $409,000 increase in personnel. That's also, we also project $103,000 increase to internal service funds, as well as a $479,000 decrease in other financing uses, so other transfers.
Can I ask a question about that? Why, why the big increase for the plans 16-17? Another 400, almost $400,000 for increase in expenses for contract services and personnel? That's kind of a big jump. And for internal service fund, which is related to those, I guess.
So the big change in personnel is you have the cost of living adjustments. We have that in at 3% per year, as well as the Calpers unfunded liability payments that are going to increase.
Is that 3%? Is that going from 8-3-9-5 to 8-7-1-3, 3%?
The next slide actually, that breaks that down. Because that's obviously the, the most noticeable number on there. The other noticeable number on there is the other financing uses that relates to less, reduced transfers into the reserve funds, simply because the reserves are reaching a policy capacity, if you will, in this budget. So the, the next slide here breaks out that $409,000 and where that's, how that's being driven.
The personnel increase is a $129,000 increase in salary. That's composed of the COLA, the 2.8% increase, step increases for employees who are eligible for the step increase, as well as two personnel changes, the city clerk going from 90% to a, to 100%. And an associate planner going from 50% to 100, 100% as well. The longevity pay or specialty pay increases $32,000. There were seven police officers that are now going to get longevity pay next year. And then the benefits, the $203,000 increase, that's composed of purse and the flexible spending credit. Per increase next year is $186,000. And the flexible spending credit is 16.
I will, I'll note that the associate planner moved to full-time, that we did that at the mid-year. So that isn't a new thing being proposed in this budget, but it wasn't included in last year's proposed budget.
I don't understand flexible spending credit.
It's the healthcare, the healthcare benefit we provide employees.
When we look at internal service charges, it's increasing just over $100,000. That's in the self-insurance liability fund. That's going up $95,000, and that's based on the premium increase of the, of the JPA. And then we also have an increase in our workers, workers' compensation insurance, and that's based on claim experience.
The significant increase that you note in the, in the self-insurance liability fund costs, that's a result of the, the city's experience factor, due to the payouts that were associated with the flood. There's a relatively complicated formula we use in determining our liability rates. It's comprised both of our, our size and our experience, is a five-year experience factor. This is actually the last year that I anticipate seeing significant liability cost increases due to those costs that the city experienced, unless we are hit with a new big liability claim in the next, in the next year. The work comp figures are actually quite interesting. There's going to be a real reshuffling in our work comp rates for all the member agencies, simply because overall, as a JPA, we do work comp and liability with 10 other cities, and we pool our risk. There has been a continued positive trend in overall work comp claims throughout the 10-city JPA. And again, the costs for each city are portioned based on an experience factor and a risk factor. And due to the declining costs, next year, we're going to be dropping off a huge year in terms of work comp payouts and replacing it with some very, much smaller years. And so, the way the costs are distributed in work comp are going to change. I think, I think we're okay there. And I do anticipate that this is going to be the, a leveling off now of our liability expenses after this year's increase.
When we look at the other financing uses, it's down $479,000. And this is kind of a good, good news story. The contingency reserve and emergency reserve numbers are decreasing. The reason for that is both of those reserves are going to hit the council policy levels next year. And you can see in 16-17, it goes down even more because we're at that, at that target. As well as $164,000 decrease to the CIP projects. As I mentioned, the reserves, you, this, this chart kind of shows you the emergency and contingency reserve levels since 2007, 2008, as well as the target that the city's trying to meet. We're going to, projecting to end the year slightly below the target for emergency reserve, and even less below for contingency reserve, with both of those targets being met in the 15-16 budget. The Measure O expenditures continue to follow the five-year financial plan. We're projecting just under $1.1 million next year. The expenditures are $105,000 for public works crews, $35,000 for PD staff, $700,000 transfer to CIP, and $242,000 to reserves. Looking at the capital improvement program, the total allocation is $1.2 million next year. There's two components to that. There's a $700,000 Measure O revenue transfer, as well as a $517,000 in grants. The $700,000 is proposed to be split between the Monterey Avenue paving project at $330,000, the 42nd and Diamond paving at $198,000, Stockton Avenue Bridge Assessment $50,000, the Bay Avenue Capital Avenue, Capitola Avenue Roundabout at $100,000, and the Village Sidewalk projects at $22,000. The grants are the Rispin Park improvements at $384,000, and the Bay Avenue Utility Undergrounding at $133,000.
As part of this budget, towards the end here, we're going to be talking about our fund balance. And we will be talking about potentially allocating some additional funding into a couple of these projects from the fund balance. We also do plan to apply for a couple of grants, both the Airborne grant for the Roundabout and this Prop 1 grant for some flood control work.
When we look at expenditures by department, all these increases and decreases, and one decrease that you see on here are caused by the salary, as we discussed earlier, as well as the internal service increase, which is allocated to departments. The big, big increase in departments is in the Police Department, the $306,000. The reason that one went up is there's a $60,000 in the salary, the specialty pay for those longevity of the seven officers, as well as the retirement at $114,000 increase. The community grants are on a two-year grant cycle, so they're under contract this year. The total adopted budget will be $277,000. There was a slight entry error in the proposed budget of $6,340. So, so that'll be increased based on the contracts and with the reduction in the Information Technology Fund. The successor agency continues payments from the recognized obligation payment schedule for the Housing Authority rental program, the Castle Millennium Housing Project, the Rispin, Piri Park improvements, and the administrative allowance. When we look at the long, long-term range financial plan, you can see that we, we projected decrease in revenue with the expiration of Measure D, and then a continued growth in sales tax. On the expenditure side, the, the future years don't assume any transfers for CIPs, as well as the POB being paid off in 2018. The, the long-range plan is based, obviously, on strong economic growth in sales taxes, other taxes. The projection is that it'll cover future expenditures, but we'll have a reduction in potential money available for CIP or other priorities in future years, going from $450,000 to $550,000. Some of the assumptions are the strong economic growth for sales and property tax, personnel increasing 3% per year. As I mentioned, the POB final payment in August 2017, that's, that's a positive, since it helps us, right now, it's an expenditure of $664,000. We have the Measure D expiration of $1.1 million. As I mentioned, we project that revenue will cover the future expenditure costs, and leaving about $500,000 for CIP projects. Measure D expiration is a pretty big hit to the revenue source for the city, and it's going to reduce the future CIP project funding options.
So with that, we'll talk a little bit about some of the specifics in the departments. First, I want to start and talk a little bit about the Police Department. First, the good news is that violent crime decreased by 26% in our most recent year. Domestic violence, down 43%. Overall, Part 1 crime showed a slight decrease as well. The challenges for the department have been the increase in Part 2 crimes. These are the more property crimes, the less serious offenses, the increased calls for services, and the increased numbers of arrests. increased numbers of arrests. One of the challenges we're facing in the Police Department, and the chief's here to answer any questions on this, is that for more than a year now, we've had two sworn positions that have been unavailable to do daily patrol due to injuries. And what that means is that rather than having 15 officers available for patrol, we have 13. Last summer, we were lucky enough that we had a CSO who we were able to move up and work out a class and help backfill some of that staffing shortfall and really help the department out. That officer has since been hired on the department as a full-time patrol officer. So we're once again approaching a summer here with 13 versus the full complement of 15 officers. One of the ideas the chief and I would like to put out there is to consider adding a police officer position, a full-time police officer position, and decreasing at this point a vacant CSO position. The net cost is about $45,000 in any given year. The advantage to doing so versus just trying to backfill the position with sort of a temporary officer type, either an annuitant or some paid reserve type thing, is that what this does is it lets us recruit for a full-time officer who will go through the training program and become a member of our force, hopefully for years to come. And potentially in the future, when we are able to return to a full complement of officers, I think then we can have a conversation about what the appropriate staffing level is and look at whether we need to adjust it again when there's future vacancies. But at this point, right now, it's not included in your proposed budget. But if you would like to do so, and you can hear from the chief more on this if you'd like, we can, what we would propose doing is reducing the IT information technology transfer by $45,000, which would fund this added police officer position in next year's budget. Looking over key community development, there's no changes proposed between the way they stand right now and moving forward into next year. You'll recall that there has been some transitions in community development that occurred in this last year, including a new building official, new building inspector. Our building inspector previously was promoted to the building official. And in last year's mid-year, we took a half-time assistant planner and moved him up to full-time to help with code enforcement and implementation of other department priorities. Some of the key projects that they have planned for this next year include the zoning code update, our climate action plan, housing element, the local coastal plan update, green building program update, and reinstating the mortgage assistance. That's the CDBG grant that they received, we received last year, I believe. We haven't finalized the contract now for $500,000 to restart some of the important affordable housing programs that the city lost with the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. Looking at public works, obviously, a big conversation is about the CIP projects and recognizing that, looking at the department as a whole and trying to figure out how we can maximize service delivery, which is really, obviously, the goal, and we understand it of very high importance. And we're proposing a little bit of a reorganization in the Public Works Department, and really what we're proposing to transition to is effectively, I can't even read that from here, is that the field? Basically going to a, ultimately going to a project manager who'd be an office position here to help supervise and oversee the implementation of the CIP projects, the capital projects, and then having a single point of contact with the field crew. To get there, we're proposing an interim step this year, which is basically creating a field supervisor. The issue that we're trying to resolve is, as you see on the far left, is that kind of vertical management structure, trying to basically make it a more flat management structure until we have a single point of contact out into the field. We have a great employee who's ready for the opportunity, and we're recommending that, basically, this interim step. And when the maintenance superintendent position becomes vacant in the future, at that point, we'll be proposing the project manager replacement, which becomes more of an office position to help supervise and oversee the project delivery. At this point, it's essentially status quo budgets in both finance and the City Managers' Department. The only minor change in the City Managers' Department is that our city clerk, which has gone on a voluntary 90% schedule these last several years to help offset some of the costs of the new software program, we're proposing to bring her back to full-time in this budget. So this is probably one of the more interesting components of the budget, I think, is the 934 general fund balance that we're looking at at this point. I want to call this a kind of a preliminary recommendation at this point. We want to work with the Finance Advisory Committee and bring you a unified recommendation. This was what we presented to them last night. But our preliminary recommendation is to consider establishing sort of a fiscal stabilization fund, looking at the, basically, external economic effects and what their implications are for the city, and try to set something up that maybe helps us weather those future economic storms, understanding that the city's ability to respond to budget crises is probably not necessarily as rapid as, you know, economic news can be sometimes. We're also proposing keeping just less than $300,000 in fund balance. Keep in mind that we do have a, we've received a claim for a TOT refund, relatively large claim that we are reviewing at this point, and keeping some set aside to help offset that should there ultimately be a liability associated with the TOT claim. We're also leaning toward, we're suggesting, consider another couple hundred thousand dollars into the CIP, which would bring the total general fund transfer into the CIP to $900,000. And the projects we're suggesting would be the Rispin Park, the tennis courts, and $50,000 in Village Sidewalk matching funds. The tennis courts have been identified by the Monti Foundation as the recipient of this year's fundraising effort associated with the fireworks show, and we estimate that with the Monti Foundation fireworks money coupled with USTA grant application that we're submitting, we can re, and the $50,000 allocation, we'll be able to resurface the tennis courts, which is something that we need to do. We're also proposing an additional $100,000 facilities fund transfer, putting $41,000 into the information technology fund, and the Art and Cultural Commission is requesting another $3,500. And I understand that's a high figure, they anticipate it coming in a little bit less for a plenary event. And I said it quickly, so I hope I pronounced it right. Good. So as I mentioned before, we presented these numbers to the Finance Advisory Committee. They asked some questions about debt pay-down opportunities. There is a relatively intriguing debt pay-down opportunity that may exist that's worth at least looking at. We'll be bringing information to the Finance Advisory Committee about that, and they'll be bringing the recommendation to you at the June budget hearing on this.
Good question. On the last slide, is that $41,000 the rev funds you were going to use to support that additional police officer?
In some ways. Frankly, what-
Mention a number, I just-
Right. You know, it's, it's, so what we did was, we recognized the fact that the funding for the officer should come out of recurring funding. And so, looking at our overall budget and revenue, we were putting in extra money into the IT fund, so we took it out. Now here, we're looking at some fund balance and we're putting it back in. So, you know, frankly, it didn't seem appropriate to talk about using, you know, a one-time fund balance to pay for ongoing officer position. At the end of the day, I think you saw through that, and it's kind of what's happening. But at the same time, looking at the IT fund and realizing that it probably does need to increase balance. You'll recall that the IT fund was used to help reestablish the reserves, I want to say back in 2012. So we had a relatively large pull from a couple of those internal service funds into the reserves, and they haven't fully recovered at this point, and this is to sort of help with that recovery.
Why the $290,000 for a potential TOT refund? That's a lot.
The claim is not that large. You'll recall that, you know, Tori and I, for several years, have been recommending a fund balance of approximately $200,000 to $250,000, just because, as you know, the economic conditions change, and revenues and expenditures don't always come in exactly as forecast. So our suggestion is to keep a buffer in there, and that buffer is both, there's two kinds of buffers you're looking at. One is just an overall fund balance buffer for the city, so we don't close the year with a negative balance. But in addition, we are anticipating a five-figure hit once we conclude the audit and the TOT claim review.
The financial stabilization fund, is that the bank?
The thinking behind it really is that in an economic downturn, the news comes pretty quick, as I think many of the council members know who've been on the council through these in the past. And often, it's difficult to make the service level adjustments at the city in time with them. And frankly, the emergency reserves, in my opinion, really should be set aside for emergencies, natural disasters, things that literally fall from the sky. And in some ways, the contingency reserve in the past has been used for this, but you can also think of the contingency reserve as an operating reserve. The contingency reserve really helps the city through its cash flow issues that we have during the course of the year due to the mismatch between revenues and expenditures. So in some senses, what we're at least tossing out with this is identifying a pot of money that says, look, when we go into these economic climates and things are going down, we know that we're not going to quite be able to react quickly enough, and this is a pot of money that's intended to help with that.
What's the ground rules to using that money?
At this point, we haven't established them. But, I mean, I think from staff standpoint, we're suggesting it is sort of a, you know, if you're thinking about the most restricted funds in our general fund, would be the emergency reserves, then contingency, and then this. This would really be to deal with sort of the vicissitudes of the economic conditions to help us balance and adjust, because, as I said, sometimes we can't make the adjustments as quickly as the economy changes.
Thank you.
There are several, two other adjustments that I do want to make that aren't included in your proposed budget that we would propose, including in the final budget. One is that you'll recall that there's $40,000 sitting in an escrow fund that was a result of a settlement between the school district and the city related to the development of the Jade Street preschool. We would propose budgeting those so that we can expend them. We've reached conceptual agreement with the school district about how they should be used for some radar speed display signs in that neighborhood over there. The school district is enthusiastic about them and think that they really work to help slow down traffic around their schools. In addition, Steve is proposing an $8,000 increase in the gas tax fund. The school district would like to expand use of those beyond the sort of Jade Street neighborhood, and we agreed that we could go 50/50 on those costs, and so be sharing some of the cost increases with the school district with that gas tax.
Or do they want to expand to?
They proposed a secondary sign on Monterey. There's already one on Monterey for, I believe, its eastbound travel, and they'd like to see one in westbound travel. And then, the language in the settlement agreement talks about using the $40,000 for things directly adjacent to the school district, and we were also looking at one at 45th, which was a couple blocks away from Jade Street, and they thought it'd be better for us to go 50/50 on that. In spirit of cooperation, we thought that was a reasonable request. I have, I have. I guess I do want to know, one caveat to that is that we had a meeting and we kind of outlined the conceptual framework for what this could look like. We've sent the school district a letter outlining our proposal and the elements that we discussed. We have not received a written response yet, and so obviously, the expenditures would be predicated on receiving written buy-in from the school district to make sure we're all on the same page. So I think that takes us to our next steps. There's this presentation this evening. We have the Finance Advisory Committee is going to be talking about their recommendations about the fund balance and the overall budget recommendation to the council. On June 3rd, the FAC will be making a presentation and recommendation to the council. Any questions or items for research that you identify this evening, we will be happy to bring back on that June 3rd date. And then we'll be looking at June 11th for appropriation limit policy, as well as potentially looking at adoption either June 11th or June 18th for our budget hearings. So with that, we're available for questions.
Jamie, just as a suggestion is that, I think it'd be helpful for us to counsel if we had a copy of the PowerPoint. Because there's a lot of information that was given to us that we hadn't seen before, and being in front of us, it's easier to follow and take a notice to. So if we can have a copy of the PowerPoint before the presentation, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Questions of City Manager? Steph? Stephanie?
On the 27th, what are we going to have on that council agenda for this? We don't, we're not going to have any items about this, probably?
27th is Finance Advisory-
That's FAC meeting.
I'm 20, I'm sorry. That's FAC meeting. And then for our council meeting on the 28th, then we won't have anything on the budget as an item. But are there, and the community groups have been told they don't have to come, they're not going to come, but a few people are going to come, make a general presentation, or be available for questions, or we have a plan for that?
So the 28th is a regular council meeting? I do believe we've received a request from-
Human Care Alliance and United Way. Just about general information about what they've been doing, but not soliciting for funds.
So that would be a typical presentation done at the beginning of the regular meeting on the 28th?
So that'll go on during oral communications?
Pending a final development of the agenda with the mayor, my expectation is if it's placed on there, it'll be placed on as a presentation?
I'm fine for giving them, for instance, if they needed four minutes or five minutes, I'm fine with that, if the council agrees with me. If they want to come during oral communication so they didn't have to wait through the whole meeting, we'll let them do it then and give them maybe a minute or two more than anybody else, if that's fair.
The other option would just be our typical presentation format, which has often been done for community groups in the past, and that's a little bit longer process.
It just spreads things out.
Mr. Mayor, that's why we all voted to do the two-year cycle.
Right, to avoid that, I thought.
Yes. I think that we are willing to give them more time than oral communications would be if they came during that time, they can come into the podium and have their time, except if that's what they'd like.
I only have a reservation about more time, because if other people are here that, when we grant that courtesy, do we open the door for anything else? That's, I'll go along with whatever you choose, but I would think that based on the fact that we already agreed to a two-year cycle, that-
Okay.
-three minutes would be adequate.
Well, let's discuss that, Jamie.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have comments to staff? I have a couple of things just to bring up and discussion. There's a number of projects, and maybe they already have been funded, Steve, that I'm not sure the status of. One of them is the Claire Street traffic calming. Is that, where is that in status?
So that is funded. We are waiting for the sanitation district project that goes down Claire Street to be built, and as we found out last week, they did not get good bids on their project. They were anticipating going to destruction now being done in January. Now they're looking at potentially going into construction in January. So we have a preliminary design, we have a contract awarded for the design, the final design of that. It involves some workshops with the residents, but I'm holding off on the workshops until we have a window when we know we will build it in.
Okay. The Village Crosswalk intersection down here, what we call, is that the Stockton Bridge?
Stockton Avenue intersection, Stockton, Espinac.
So what really keeps us from doing that this summer?
So we did go out to bid once, didn't get any bids back. I tried negotiating a direct contract right now. We do not have a price for it, and we don't have a bid for it, and given the timing, it just doesn't seem like it's about a four-week project in the village if the contractors dedicate it, and at this point, I think it's a matter of if we need to wait again.
So you're saying, thinking waiting till October?
Yeah, we'll go out to bid in like July, and then bid it, construct it same after.
To be honest with you, I'm not afraid to do that during the summer. I mean, it holds up traffic a little bit. It has, it's an inconvenience to people, but it shows in the community that we're taking a step, and that's been one that everybody, most people know about, and so.
If that's the will of the council, we could try and move, we would move it, we could move it forward this summer.
Is there any feeling in this council about this?
I don't know that we're going to get particularly competitive bids for a paving and concrete job in the middle of the summer. We didn't get bids before.
Right.
I don't know if we're going to get it now. Any chance of negotiating this?
I'll keep trying. Yeah, I've approached some contractors. Contracts are all pretty busy, there's a lot of projects out right now. So pricing-wise, but Earthworks has expressed interest, we just haven't gotten together with them. So it's, you know-
I think people might complain about it. I'd be kind of, I mean, some of the locals would say, great, you know, we're working on that, but the people that are here visiting are going to be very inconvenienced by it, I think. They might be turned off by it.
Okay.
Like coming, I mean, they're coming here, you know, from San Jose, and they're coming to a place where it's kind of hard to get to, I mean, when they get here. So I'm just, I would be kind of nervous about having a construction project- So I'm just, I would be kind of nervous about having a construction project in the middle of our high season.
Okay, well, let's see what happens when the bids come in and we make a big decision.
You know, I kind of agree with you, Dennis. I would love to move forward on the project. I'm really disappointed that that didn't get off and running. But I do agree with Stephanie. I think that, I mean, my initial impulse was that it would be good just to do it and get it done. And when I think about, you know, the other project, what it entailed and the cooperation with the restaurants, you know, it would probably not go over well if we did it. My concern, and maybe my compromise on this is a little bit, is do we have to wait till July to start bidding? Can we start that process sooner so that we definitely would have something in hand? And if that didn't work, I didn't want to fall into a situation where it just slips through the cracks again, do you know what I mean? And I don't know if it's possible to expedite that bidding procedure.
We can certainly bid it now. One of the issues is if you get too far ahead of when you want to construct it, is the pricing may change that the contractors provide bids for.
Right.
So you typically want to bid it three, two to three months before you're starting constructions. We're looking for an October construction. We award a contract in August, September, and then they would be willing to go, and they'd be more comfortable with the price. We can certainly bid it now. If we don't like those bids, we could rebid it.
Yeah. If that's the procedure, if that's the timeline, and that works, it just, I just, now, now I'm just nervous that it's going to slip again, and I just don't, you know, it was something that was really long overdue, so we really need to focus on that. I guess the sentiment that I carry, which is kind of what Dennis is alluding to, is we've done a great job of collecting a lot of measure-o money, and due to no fault of some of our own, with as clear as anything, people are not seeing these projects being completed. And, you know, we've got this money set aside, and then what that also does, it creates this backlog we're talking about with another public works director. I mean, public work's going to be inundated with all these projects, and I'm sympathetic to that, so it's just tough, because we are getting a little, I don't want to say negative feedback, just mild rumbling. It's like, where's our, we want to see our measure-o money, and we all here on the same page, it's just, I would just love to see one project just, you know, moving forward, that's all.
I'll tell you a small one, Steve, that we could do that would really, the sidewalk on Capitola Avenue that stretches from the upper area of the city there on down through that, it's just a one area there with, I know it needs retaining, well, I think you're in design process with that now, is that true?
Yeah, so, in general, on the CIP projects, we did award two contracts six weeks ago for two good civil engineering firms who are working very hard right now to try and catch up with the backlog of projects. The reorganization that Jamie talked about in the Public Works Department will assist me in giving me more time to assess the projects and deal with them. I can hand off kind of the operational projects that I'm seeing to be dealing with on a daily basis now to the maintenance superintendent at this point, and then as we transition to a project manager. I'm keenly aware that we're not getting projects done, and it is my focus now, but I think we've made good steps in the last couple of months to try and catch up and get the backlog going. So that'll be my focus from here on.
Thank you, Steve.
Josh?
I haven't seen the design for the intersection there, but I think part of it is to take out that single parking space, that short-term.
Yes, it widens the sidewalk along that side.
Right. Can that be taken out without too much trouble, so that?
We went through? Oh, taken out now?
Yeah, so that the traffic flows better, because that's the main problem with that spot.
I mean, yeah, there's, there's nothing, we could take that out at any time.
Right. If you take that out, the left-right turn will be so much more facilitated, and traffic through the village would be a lot easier.
Let me look at that, and I'll report back.
Actually, I don't know if you want to make the traffic through the village any easier. More people drive through there. It's a catch-22.
There's a loading zone there, too. There's 24 minutes.
It's a 24-minute zone.
Would that require any striping, Steve, or just removal of the parking place?
Just removal of the parking.
Yeah, it's a simple thing, that's what I was thinking, and.
It's a precious parking spot in the village, though, I have to say.
Okay.
To speak on the other side, you know, we have taken, we've taken out so many parking places in the village, and you know what? There goes another one.
They're all precious.
We love every one of them.
But I've seen so many, I've seen so many snarls at that spot.
Children.
And I would like to reiterate what Ed said, so there are people that are wondering what the heck's going on. Thanks.
Hear it loud and clear.
Yeah.
Okay. I have another issue with reserves, and I was on the council when we initiated reserves, and it was kind of a learning experience at the time. We looked at some other jurisdictions, and we looked at percentage of revenues and that type of thing. But the caps that we set, or what the amounts that we set, needs to be relooked at again. I don't know that the contingency reserve, emergency reserves are really the correct amount that we should be dealing with. It's been set a long time ago, and I'd like to look at that. And we're talking about in next year, coming to matching the allocated amounts that we set aside for reserves, but we don't even know if that is correct. I'd like to relook at that.
The FAC is asking for the benchmark study to come back to us, so we can look at how we really match up to other communities. We may want to bump those up.
Okay.
There was discussion, and we're probably on the low end of that. And this other fund sort of addresses that, in a sense. It's how you allocate according to the fund for whichever purpose. That's a great point.
Rudy, could you address the officer issue with us? Just explain what you see here?
Sure. Can you go back to the first slide, please? So as the City Manager indicated, the good news is, you know, violent crime is down 26% and along with some of the other violent crime issues that we've had in the past. But one of the challenges that we have started to see is the increase of calls for service. Looking at the last five years, in 2014, these were the highest over this five-year period, where arrests are increasing year to year, Part II crimes and drug violations are obviously going up. We've had two long-term industrial injuries that we've been absent from. Last summer, what we did to address some of the issues, because we also had two officers gone on FMLA leave last summer, so we were actually down four. What we did is we reallocated our patrol staffing. We put a new schedule together last summer to accommodate that, and we were able to at least get ourselves limped through the summer without having to dip into our overtime, and that was helpful. But at this point, what happens when we, with the two officers being down, and as we lose one or two for vacation or mandatory training, as we have new assignments, then we're down almost 20%. And we are one incident away from not being able to manage those. And so, instead of looking at eliminating training, as I mentioned, some of it is required mandated training by the state, we're trying to avoid those long-term overtime issues and adjusting people's schedules on a weekly basis, trying to fill holes. And so, to do that, to keep our department staffing levels at what they've been, right now, we have 31.65 full-time employees. By moving the CSO position to a full-time officer position and eliminating the CSO position, we still maintain our staffing levels at 31.65. Our 10-year average, as far as FTEs, is about 31.56. In 2007, 2008, our high was 33.50. We're obviously still well below that high. Our lowest was in 2011, 2012, where we had 29.59 employees. So we are staying within our 10-year average, and we're not increasing our overall numbers.
Chief, the two officers that are out on leave are not being paid, correct?
Well, they are industrial injuries, and so because of that, they are still on the payroll.
So they're getting their full pay?
If I can, I'm going to defer the question to the City Manager.
I don't think they're both getting full pay, are they?
So, in one case, there's an approved work, so one of them is on unpaid leave at this point?
Unpaid leave, so we're not paying one officer, and he's not there?
Right.
Okay. Yet, that money is in the budget, so this hire is a no-brainer. Am I making it too simple?
Maybe.
We can't replace that person because.
No, I understand, but if we assume that that person is not going to show up for work during this budget year, we're covered already. And since they've been out already well over a year, I think that's, you know, the smart money might go with that.
You know, we obviously have to work through the HR issues, and the position is still in the budget, and that position, you know, the person is still an officer with the city.
Absolutely.
But I think that the point you made, that the person is at this point still on unpaid leave, on unpaid leave, that the budget impact at this point, we were showing you the worst-case scenario.
I'm much more concerned with a police coverage impact than I am with a budget impact for somebody who might possibly, maybe someday, come back to work.
We were trying to keep that, fill those gaps with very little budget impact as possible.
So, City Manager sort of talked about it. So someone does come back, or both come back, I have no idea what that's going to be. So potentially, we have an extra person. I know within the 10-year window, we may not, but budget-wise, that is an extra position. So what position does that place you in, in terms of your staffing decisions?
Well, it helps in that we're able to fill those extra positions so that we can respond to these increased calls for service that have been trending over the last five years.
But we may have an extra person also.
Well, we're asking to increase that from 15 to 16.
Yeah, okay. The CSO, will we have to reopen that?
No, our recommendation would be to eliminate that position, and then, so we'd be one less non-sworn position, but we would add one sworn position.
Okay, but we've used the CSOs before, so.
We had a unique situation last year. We were using a CSO down in the village, and that person also had their post certificate to become a full-time officer. As I mentioned earlier, we were down four positions last year, and so we used that person in a reserve position. And then, at the end of the year, we had a sergeant retire last year, and so we hired and we filled that position with that reserve officer, who was a formal, a former CSO. So we've never, we've not filled that CSO position that's been vacant.
Okay.
Just a prognosis, if it's possible. The officer that's off on workman's comp, is there, is he had a limit of 48/50 time? Is, where does that person stand?
Yes, without delving too much into the personnel side of it, one of them is on FMLA, and they are looking at extended leaves without pay. So we are working through those processes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Rudy. Appreciate it. One more issue. During the year, Steph and I both discussed this with the council about the idea of doing an ADA line item in our budget, and actually allocating an amount of money that we would do towards ADA improvements.
There actually is, in the facilities budget, there's, I believe, a 25, $15,000 allocation to that. In addition, into the, in the CIP, last year, at the mid-year, we added a $75,000 item. So there is approximately $90,000 to $100,000 identified for ADA improvements. A lot of that's still going to wristband repair of the pathway there, but, so we have identified those two projects. We didn't put more money into the CIP portion of it this year. Certainly, that's something we could do with the council direction.
Okay. Stephanie?
I just, you want to go ahead, Jean? I just had some other comments.
So, you afforded me a list of the ADA inventory, and a lot of the things have been taken off, you know, we've actually addressed them. So what is the status right now of our meeting all those obligations? That's what I was going to bring up. Thank you, Stephanie, for that list.
So I believe you're talking about our transition plan that was adopted in the 1990s, and we have completed, I'd say, 98% of the projects. There's a few outstanding items, like the handrails on these ramps and things like that that we're still working on currently. I think our next step is to update our transition plan. There's new regulations that have gone into effect, and working with the building department, who's actually our ADA officer, to figure out the best way to update our transition plan that would identify the next series of projects.
Do we have building personnel that are adequately trained for this?
For code compliance issues, yes, but for preparing the transition plan, we probably would recommend a contract service for that.
Okay.
Do we have any plans for staff training? Because Daniel was going to work on that.
I know Daniel, who was a contract building inspector here and previous building official, has talked about that, and we, right now, we're waiting for this transition plan update. I think that's the biggest thing we need to do. We did meet with some local advocates and talk to them, and they were, seemed most interested in updating the transition plan at this point. So, answer your question, no, we don't have any immediate plans for training of staff, but we're focusing on trying to get improvements on the ground.
I just had some other topics to bring up. Go ahead.
One point I do want to make on that, though, is that there's certain required testing and training for a building official to get certified as a building official here that he's doing in this year's budget, and you will notice that the training budget for the building department is higher than it's been in previous years, and that's specifically to get him through the coursework.
Both of them.
Right, to get him certified and through the coursework that he needs to get through to be a building official.
Well, and, or Danny, too. If we want to, you know, give Daniel some extra training in that area, too, when she's out and about inspecting properties, you know, it might be really helpful for her also to be aware of those kind of things that she can bring in when she's making recommendations for all the storm, storm drain work that she's doing. But my other topics were, please ask the county for a Zone 5 budget and a list of projects, so that we can have some information in our budget for what we need to do, if there's anything we need to do, because we do have these areas around town which are drainage areas, and we really need to make sure that they're being kept clean and clear for future storms, if we ever have any. But they're, pardon?
I thought I mentioned, wasn't there a grant that we're applying for?
Not for this. We just need to get the, we need to write the letter to the Zone 5, and really get that ball rolling, and.
What we really need with them, Steffy, is to identify what is in Zone 5 and what isn't. We don't even know that yet.
Yeah, because I mean, there's.
Steve knows any more than we do.
I know. Because, you know, I've mentioned it before, there's a house, you know, four houses, three houses from my house, that has one of these drainage areas, and that house sold. The people don't know it. They could have filled it in, so it's not a drainage area anymore, so it's not going to serve its purpose for draining the stormwater, and we're going to have a flood like we used to. 41st, 42nd Avenue used to flood, all it used to flood because the backyards all sloped in the back. And so when we put in those storm drains and have these other drainage areas, there's one by the auto center, and there's a few around town, so we just need to identify them, and then make sure that they're working or have them fixed. Yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, it shouldn't be such a big deal. Anyway, that's my list. And I want to add into just the City Manager's budget, just a little bit of money for a library party that I mentioned to you before. The library, our library is going to be, I have my list from last year that I brought up, and it's pretty much the same thing, as always. And the library last year, I said, "Library birthday party, 15 years." Well, now it's sweet 16. So, sweet 16, let's have a, just a little, you know, cake and punch for the kids this summer, celebrate the library, generate some interest, generate some volunteers, generate some people that'll help us with the Friends of the Library campaign to raise money for the future of Capitola. I'd really like the Planning Commission to review the CIP and give us their opinions on it. They're the ones that are also out there in the trenches and know what's going on in the streets and corners and traffic and circulation and everything else, so I wouldn't mind if they took a look at that and give us any, any of their recommendations for anything they see that should be moved up, anything to put a little more money in. I used to, as an individual, when I was on the Planning Commission, but the Planning Commission didn't do it as a whole, but they're, they're very knowledgeable people, and I value their opinion. I'd really like us to look for a little money for a trail marker for the Sanctuary Scenic Rail Trail, and in the back of the rail trail plan, there is a section of different types of trail markers, and of course, we have the lovely wave sign down there in the village already. That's the most expensive one. And then, but there's some other ones, and we could put them up, one on Cliff, and then one, another one maybe on the wharf. So just some, with our extra money, I think we could do a couple for, you know, or three for less than $50,000, I think. I think there was something like $10,000 each, so, you know, less than $50,000 for someone like that, to get that going, because that is not going to happen unless we do it, because the RTC's not going to have the money to put in those interpretive signs. They want us to do it, so that's our job. So, I, the museum director is 50%. Was that, was he going to be increased, Larry? Maybe he has the information of that. I heard a rumor that maybe it was thinking, he was thinking about increasing his hours?
He decided he didn't want, he wanted to stay.
He decided he didn't want, he wanted to stay at 50% this year after speaking with his wife.
Oh, okay.
And the workload.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I'd just like us to, I'd have you look at their budget, too. I know we got some extra money in last year for oral histories, and those are going really well. But if they need a little more money to continue their oral histories, I'd really like to put a few more $1,000 in that budget. They've, Gail did interview Tom King, and apparently it went very well. There apparently is an old interview of Tom King that was just recently found, so I'll get that, and we'll get it back. So, anyway, I just wanted to look at their budget, and if they needed a little more, I mean, we're making a list, and it's getting longer, and if you have some folks that you think would be really valuable to tell their stories of how they came to Capitola and their interaction with Capitola history, and how they were part of Capitola history, you know, call Frank, let him know, because he's working on that. And there, on one of the pages, there's pages of our loans, but it's on page three, but we have lots of page threes, so I forget which section it's in. Mark, do you know where that is, or Jamie?
It's under the multi-year obligations, I believe.
What section?
The red tab, towards the back.
The second red tab?
Yes.
General fund expenditure?
The third red tab.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
The third red tab, yes.
There's, there's, the next, on the top section, the next to the last one, the beach and village parking lot lease financing, that was, final distribution was in March of 2015. I was just thinking, maybe we should put that in another section that are paid off, if somebody's looking at that. This is not a current obligation, it's paid off, isn't it?
That was when we got the money. We received the money, the $1.3 million in March of 2015.
Oh, okay.
That was the final payment from the I-Bank.
Oh, okay.
So, unfortunately, we still owe that money.
Oh, okay, okay. Steve, I have another question for you. What are our plans for keeping up 41st Avenue without RDA money? I know RDA money couldn't be used for repairing, it could be used only for new roads and so forth, but are you concerned about that at all? And should we be putting some more of this, perhaps, extra money into that? Because if we don't have the RDA money anymore, we're going to be looking to backfill some of those expenses.
So, the CIP, the pavement management program, does call for paving 41st from Claire's through the Highway 1 overpass, not including the bridge structure, but both approaches. I think that's still two years out. I think we do need to include 41st in our pavement management program, and that's my intent as we move forward, to keep doing that. So, we've identified it, we're aware of it, and right now, it's two years out before we have money designated for there.
Well, I think it might be wise for us to look at some of that extra money that we're going to have, and earmarking it for that. Those are, it's a really important project, it's very expensive, that's our highest traffic use. When it breaks down, it's really, really bad. And I think, you know, we need to take care of all of our roads, and I'm not saying any are more important than any others, but those, we've got to really put high up on our list, I think, because they are, 41st Avenue is so important, they get broken down so easily. And, but with our increase in traffic, you know, around the rest of town, too, you've got to look at the other roads, too. But without RDA, I think we especially need to look at some of those kind of projects that we used to put RDA money into and maybe allocate that. So, the only other thing that I brought up last year that I want to bring up again is just in general disaster preparedness. And I don't know what we can do or how prepared we are as a city, but I'd like to look at it. And, you know, all of the experts say it's not if, it's when. And I know Scotts Valley has cotton blankets, not that I want us to buy cotton blankets, but, you know, what is our plan? We need to have, we need to do, I think, maybe a little more than we're doing. And this is a perfect year with a little extra money. Put, you know, $75,000 or $80,000 or something into equipment, plan, support services. We make, hopefully, you know, we never have to use it, but I think we need to be a little bit prepared than we are. And it's not, you know, it's not just earthquake, but that's the most likely scenario. And last time, we did, we were pretty lucky in Capitola. We didn't have the major damage that Watsonville had and Santa Cruz had. But I, we, I think we need to do, have a better plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Harland. I completely agree with you, and the city manager has asked the police department, which we are, working on revising and updating our disaster preparedness plan. And you could probably anticipate a tabletop exercise towards the end of this year, which is what we're moving towards so that we can be ready for that. But we are in the process currently of updating our disaster preparedness plans.
I mean, I was trying to remember last time, you know, what people asked us for. They didn't really, I mean, they just wanted advice and help. Everybody was so busy cleaning up their own store, their own house, with all their broken glass and stuff like that. But I think it would go a long ways for us to, you know, at some point have, you know, I don't know, batteries and flashlights and water and, you know...
Probably the best thing we do is do a community outreach plan, just educating people that they need to have those things.
Yeah, because...
It's really individual basis.
Well, you know, and...
The Red Cross can help us with that, no charge.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, after, I think I mentioned it last year, after they made a presentation at one of the chamber meetings, one of the things that I learned that I was, it was new to me, they recommend that you have a working bicycle at home. So that if you don't have any gas in your car, or the road, there's a problem with the road, and you need to get over to visit grandma or grandpa, or your kids, or your parents, or, you know, somebody you need to get somewhere, you have transportation, if you're able to ride a bicycle. They said that's really important. And so, who would have thought, you know, that that would be a, you know, part of a plan, that, you know, you really might need that? So, anyway, that's about all I have for right now, other than those, for Steve, those little cones that delineate where the bicycles are supposed to go. If we could find anything more attractive, for Wharf Road, they're pretty ugly, and especially in front of the Fairfield Inn, they deserve something nicer looking there. Those people are paying a lot of money for a nice experience in Capitola, and right outside their door, it's pretty ugly. So, if we can do something there on Broomer, on Jade Street, the other side of Broomer, those things that divide the road so that trucks can't come out and make that turn there, it's very unattractive, and we really need to try to fix that up, I think, to, yeah, to make it work. But if you're staying there, I mean, if you're staying there, it's kind of tacky-looking, I think.
Steve, can we get you up there one more time?
[laughing]
38th Avenue.
Oh, yes. So, that is funded, and reviewing the plans one more time, and anticipate going to bid in July on that.
Is that a joint project with the county, right?
It goes to the county border, and there's no...
They're not going to do their end at the same time?
No. I mean, I...
So, you can throw all the blame down to the other end, then, huh?
We're doing our portion.
So, you're thinking that we'll do those improvements in July?
We'll word a contract in July and do it in August, September, or something.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
How's the new contractor?
Excuse me?
How's the new contractor?
He's doing a great job, yeah. I'm really happy with him.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for getting someone in.
Any more questions of staff? Okay, I guess we're ready to...
No, ready to...
Ed has the long list.
No, I'm ready, go for it.
No, I did, yeah, but a couple of things I'd like them to get back to, just a couple We've talked about in the past, of, all of us talked about cleaning up the Espinard, and it came up with the recent BIA about sidewalk cleaning. There's never really been a commitment to that. So, Steve drew up an aggressive plan, and what was the cost estimate of that aggressive cleaning?
We haven't got the proposal. We're trying to finalize that with the BIA to make sure, I mean, it's a schedule that makes sense, but probably in the $30,000 range.
Okay. We've never committed that much money to cleaning the sidewalk, and one of my fears is that, I don't, I have no problem with us demonstrating that we could actually clean the Espinard. I just don't want us to get, having the liability of owning that is our responsibility to do it all the time. So, if we did, this is just something that, when they get back, it's a consideration of what I'm going to ask for us, is it might be nice if we funded some program where we did an aggressive cleaning for one year to see if it worked, to see if an aggressive plan actually made it look better. And then, what I'd like to do is, at some later date, put it on agenda for us to talk about creating like a fee schedule that would somehow assess...
Cleaning district.
High users, medium users, low users, you know. Somehow, I believe that pizza my heart makes a mess of the sidewalks more than Yvonne's. So, it'd be something we put on agenda and talk about, but just for us, as a budget item, it'd be nice, and I think we've all chimed in at one time or another, wouldn't it be nice if the Espinard looked fabulous? And I think this plan that Steve drew up is a pretty aggressive, it pretty much quadruples the cleaning we do now, at least, yeah, so...
Would they split it with us? Are they thinking about?
I think what I would be hinting towards, you know, just trying to drop here right now, is that it would be something we would put out the olive branch to see if it worked for one year, only for one year. And then, along with that, we would back it up with some kind of a fee structure where, okay, this is what it looks like, this worked, and now you're, we're all going to buy into this.
But the BIA can't pay, help pay for it, because their money has to go only for promotion, I guess, but...
Well, this is something we're going to have to talk about. I don't even know what it's going to look like. It's just a concept of some kind of a fee district or benefit district where, you know, if you create more of a mess on the sidewalks, you're responsible for that mess. And then, the burden, you know, maybe we buy in somewhat, but the burden of this is going to fall on the businesses that create the problem. And that's something I'd just like to put on the agenda down the road, but for now, I'm leaning towards some commitment towards making an effort towards cleaning the Espinards. That's one item. The other item is, we pulled off the budget last year for a, it was a FEMA thing with the Stockton Bridge, $45,000. We had it in there, and then we whittled it down, and we got a bunch of other stuff that we all wanted. And that went away, and I don't know if it'd be nice to reconsider that. It's in there. It's in there.
Yes, the Stockton Bridge assessment was, yeah, it went up to $50,000 though this year.
It's 50, we lost five. Okay, that's our pain, okay. The other item is a, I'd just like to get some costs. I know we did some work, probably in the $5,000 to $10,000 range, in front of Vice, replacing the storm drain. And following the first rain, it didn't work. So, I'd like to see if there's any other ideas that any engineer has, and what those costs would be, of what, if there's anything possible we could do to alleviate that situation. And the last one is just a general price, what it would cost to put a bathroom at Monterey Park. That's all we got?
Good, rent one, put one there.
I'd love to talk to you about cleaning the Espinard.
I, yeah, I think we all wholeheartedly support it, and I'd, I think we should just do it. If there's any way that the BI could split it with us...
I think it's their responsibility to clean it. So, I like where you're going, at least to see this conceptually possible. But some of the ways that the trash is handled is making the problem occur every single time a trash can is moved, and drippings from all those particular vehicles that carry the trash. And so, it just makes me wonder if those are the optimal way to store garbage on that street.
When you put a trash can at the most scenic lot in the city of Capitola...
Right.
It's not only a visual problem, it's a mess problem.
Well, it smells.
And it's Zelda's problem, and they need to take care of it. Nobody else, Zelda's has to take care of it, it's a health issue.
Yeah, exactly. And I was just wondering, is, I don't know, Rich, if you can answer this, but was that something that was permitted to build that structure, and, you know, for the purpose intended? And is this a grandfathered thing, or it certainly wasn't designed properly, it's what I can see?
There was a condition in their permit that talked about them maintaining the garbage enclosure in the sidewalk in front of it, so presumably, that was part of their original project, and they're authorized to keep it there, if they clean it and maintain it.
But they haven't, okay, so they haven't met the condition of their permit, so it seems to me there's some leverage there.
Certainly.
Well, I could tell you when it came there. When Zelda's bought that deck, they moved all their trash over to that deck, and that's when it came there.
And how long ago was that?
Early 80s.
So, it's been that way for a considerable amount of time?
There's another situation here, and that is dumpster areas are now required to have a drain. The drain is required to be covered, can't rain into it, and it also has to go through their grease trap. So, we need to look a little more carefully at how that trash enclosure deals with the seepage, where it goes, and where it should go.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Ed, thanks for bringing this up, I appreciate it.
We've all brought it up.
Yeah.
Overtime. Stephanie, you brought it up, you brought it up last year. I'm just reiterating it for consideration.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So, that's an action item to get this, as Mike said, I mean, that's our request. We have to make a motion or something?
So, in terms of the process here, what we've been doing is taking notes. Some of these items require a little bit of follow-up and research, and when you come back to the next meeting, for these things that have been mentioned this evening, we'll either be hanging a price tag onto it, or a proposed way in which it could be addressed, or in some cases, I think the question was just sort of an update on status for something, but we'll be following up on these specific issues at the next meeting.
Thank you, Jamie.
I forgot to mention that Save Our Shores is going to do a beach cleanup next Tuesday here, from 9:00 to 11:00. So, if you know anyone who's interested in participating, have them help and sign up, they always do such a great job.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Sure. Police chief, Rudy? So, it was great seeing you the other day at the, excuse me...
It was great seeing you the other day at the Youth Violence Prevention Summit.
Thank you.
Yeah, and one of the things I took away from there is that Santa Cruz and Watsonville are moving forward with various programs. And, you know, I'd like to sit down with you and maybe figure out some of the things that we could do here.
The presenter is also going to be coming forward here in the next month or so to present that to council, so you will all get an opportunity to look at that plan...
Great.
...as other municipalities have as well.
Okay, good, okay. So, we could actually do some things here to address, I don't know what the condition is here, but, okay. Thanks.
Thank you. So, I think that we've concluded discussion this evening. We will adjourn to the next meeting of...
Our next meeting will be on the 28th, our regularly scheduled day.
We should ask, though, if there's a consensus that if you want the planning commission to review the CIP, because last time, I brought up a bunch of things, and they didn't happen because Jamie said, "Well, I didn't really hear three votes." So, I guess I should ask about that. Are other people interested in having the planning commission give us their opinion on it?
Presently, with the zoning ordinance going on, I think this is unfair to bring this to the planning commission.
So, the CIP, once we've gone through this and identified all the projects and all the funding, I will put together the CIP book. It does go to the planning commission, because they have to certify that it follows the general plan. So, I mean, they will get their opportunity.
But they don't really discuss it or give us, you know, feedback on it?
Generally, they do. We get comments from them. Sometimes, they don't have any, but it's their opportunity to comment on it. So, it does go before them at some point.
Yeah, but when it's a done deal? Or when, I mean, do they really feel like they have an opportunity to discuss it?
Well, once the council has identified the funding allocations for this year, then it goes to them for review and conformance with the general plan.
Okay.
Steve, roundabout.
So, the roundabout, we just got through getting the state approval for the funding that they, the STIP money that we had, and the, we're allocating another $100,000, and we are applying for an airboard grant, and the consultant's working on that right now. It's not a fully funded project yet. My goal is to get the plans to a point where we can start the public process and move forward with that. But, you know, it's about, and we're finalizing the cost. It's a big project. We also have to underground the utilities there, because there's a big utility pool that will need to be relocated. We're beginning those discussions, too. We're probably, even if we're fully funded, at least a year out just to get the utilities relocated. But we will start the public education, have information available on our website probably within the next two or three months.
Okay, thank you. Safe passage and, and I, I think that some great agreement that, that we've made with the school district on the improvements that they're asking for. I'm a little disappointed though in that we, we offered them the ability to actually have a drop-off point that, that made traffic circulation safer and more convenient for parents. And they never came back to us with it. I don't, I don't quite understand that, you know, it's-
I, I can't answer that. I mean, it's a difficult fund, they would have to staff it. They have responsibilities from when a student's dropped off at any facility that they're running until the, until they leave school at the end of the day. So they, they, right now they assume that responsibility of a child when he's dropped off at school. If they were dropped off there and it was thing, they, they would assume, be assuming responsibility there. I think it's a staffing and cost issue. I'll certainly talk to them about it again, see what their interests are, but there's some liability issues to it.
Yeah, but for us as a community, to have traffic backed up every morning at that same place, the danger is not to people that come in and out of Capitola, the danger is the kids, they're trying to ride their bike and, and to transcend through that traffic jam that they create. And so the purpose in our, in our point of view, I think, would be public safety. How do we, how do we help get those kids to school in the safest manner? And how do we encourage kids to walk or ride their bike to school? I tell you, as a parent, I'd be real questioning whether I would let my kid walk or ride a bike just because of what the traffic that they have to go through. So I, I don't know, I just-
I'd be happy to bring it up with them again.
You know what we could talk about also, now I'm looking at the picture here and the other, the other project we really need to look at are the bathrooms at the wharf. And if, if we can do something cheap and nice to get us through this year before, before we do a complete remodel out there.
Didn't that get built down?
Pardon? I mean, paint and fixtures would go a long way to improving that? I don't know.
So I, I have to admit, I don't know the current status, but I know the Public Works crews are redoing the bathrooms that are out there now. They're supposed to be painting them and replastering the sides and putting in new fixtures.
Good. Maybe that'll do it, maybe that'll do it.
Would you say cheap and, what was the other word you used?
Cheap and fast.
Cheap and quick.
And fast, there you go. They're, they're on it.
So it is, is kind of a Band-Aid on it, but they were doing some improvements out there. I will get an update and include it in the Friday update.
We'll get, we'll get Frank to get a picture and we'll hang some pictures in there. We'll get it all spiffed up, you know. We put the kind up that you can't rip down very easily.
Dennis holding the-
I'll go take a look at it. Thank you.
Frankie Ely or Frank Perry?
Ride safely.
No, I've got a- Okay, one down, two to go.